Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 20th, 2024 Board of Education meeting. We have a full audience today, which is always very exciting to see. Welcome to those who are joining us via Zoom as well. I'm going to go ahead and get going. We've got a long agenda tonight. We moved the chairperson's report up to the beginning. Usually I wait until the end to speak because I try to get the meeting moving along. I don't usually have too much to say. Well, tonight I've got some things to say. So I wanted to move it to the front to make sure that we are being as open as we possibly could. And I wanted to maximize the number of people who are updated. First thing I wanted to say is I saw Footloose this past weekend on Friday night, and it was absolutely amazing. Many congratulations to the talented cast and crew, as well as the numerous staff and volunteers that gave so much to make the show a success. I wanted to give a special thanks to the newly-formed Granby Memorial High School Fine Arts Booster for advocating for the arts. It's really, you can see it, it was right there in front of us. And I also wanted to give a special thanks to the Granby Education Foundation, I believe the chair is here this evening, for providing a grant that funded the Heads, Heads and the Sounds system, which really added a great deal to the show, and they were able to perform so beautifully. Secondly, I wanted to say a thank you to the PTO, who had arranged for John Patrick Green, an author, to attend both Kelly Lane and Wells Road this week. That seemed to be very well received. He is the author of a book series called Invested Gators, like alligators, and that went really well. So special thanks to them. And then the next thing I really wanted to address were a series of events that occurred at the middle school on Friday, and that I wanted to make sure that we talked about a little bit and that were out there. The morning started that day, and no one was injured or anything like that. Everything's perfectly fine, but I just wanted to address the things that did occur there. First in the morning, there was a tripped fire alarm. These are happening with increasing frequency, and we are aware. Superintendent Burke is working with facilities in the town to determine the root cause of the alarms and determine the best course of action we have to repair them. Shortly thereafter, a pipe burst outside, leading from the well to the ecology lab, causing some flooding near the girls' softball field. Because the water had to be turned off, and it was unclear how long an investigation and repair would take, Deep was contacted to help assist with the fish. We're going to hear more about that later tonight, I have a feeling. But it's my understanding that approximately 300, sorry, 300 older fish were safely released a little bit early, but they have a good fighting chance out there. Our students had an opportunity to help Deep with the fish, which was amazing. I wanted to just give special thanks to everyone who helped the situation, the fast thinking, the quick communication, the unity and gathering to resolve the situation. It was a really fantastic pivot in the middle of a very unexpected situation. On Saturday morning, a crew did come out. They found the source of the leak, and it was repaired, the cracked portion of the pipe. I don't know what it's called, I don't know enough about it, but it was simple to fix, and the water did get flowing again later that Saturday. And then on Friday, a little shortly after the pipe burst, one of the two boilers at the middle school failed. This is not related to the pipe bursting, just as a side note, because that was a very good question that I was wondering myself, and we determined they are not related. The boiler that broke is beyond repair. The school can operate on one functional boiler. So this issue was a good representation of our current budget situation. We're facing two uncontrollable forces as we move forward with our school system, aging infrastructure and inflation driving up our budget numbers. So Sherry and I spent a large part of the weekend making calls, and we met with the Board of Finance Chair, First Selectman, Town Manager, and Shannon at facilities to discuss what we're going to do about the situation as soon as possible. So many thanks to everyone in making those last-minute meetings and arrangements and meeting to push this issue to resolution. Finally, and then I will stop talking, this past Monday was Superintendent Burke's birthday.
Doesn't seem relevant at all.
It is not particularly relevant, but, well, she assures me it's just another day. I wanted to assure her how important she is to us, and we notice and recognize all the hard work she's doing. This piece, Lily, is for her to grow in her office as we grow together as a school district. So thank you, and I hope the next journey around the sun is wonderful.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
All right, I'm going to stop now. We are going to move along to awards and recognition. And today we're going to be recognizing Evie Buns. Evie, can you join me down at the podium?
Just maybe.
And I brought the wrong sheet. Yes, thank you. All right. Evie, thank you so much for joining us. During the fall, 7th grade students in Ms. Baylin's Writing Enrichment class participated in the Young Writers Spooky Sagas contest. The students wrote 100-word mini-stories with a focus on imagery and suspense. Evie's story was selected as one of the national winners and will be published in a book. A copy of this book will be sent to her family and the Granby Memorial Middle School library. After winning nationally, Evie's entry was submitted for the international version of the contest, and Evie was the 7th grade winner in the UK contest, which is really phenomenal. And she was sent an award plaque. Evie is an incredibly creative writer who uses her imagination to move readers into a world of her imagination. So we wanted to recognize you. Thank you so much, Evie.
It's for you. Thank you so much.
And we have a certificate as well. I don't know if your parents want to get pictures. Come on out.
Sure.
We don't have a copy of the story, which makes me sad, because it's 100 words. I really want to read it, so hopefully we'll get a copy. Obviously, it's that good.
Everyone, if you can, will you take your mom's camera?
Oh, thank you. Everybody, please.
Sure.
Yes.
For everybody. Can we need a correct audio?
You don't tell them where to go.
Come on, prepare with us. All right. Thank you so much. And then we'll do one just here.
Okay.
If you just want to eat.
Want to share?
Here.
Try it here. Tasty sandwich. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right, you are welcome to stay.
It's my turn. Hold on. No, we're not done with the recognition, so I'm going to ask that everybody stay over there. So it is my honor to recognize you, our Board of Education. March is Board of Education month. We're questioning why it's a full month for the board, but I think it coincides with budget season, that must be why. So we wish to thank you for your service, countless hours. This is a volunteer position, and we certainly recognize that you dedicate hours, not only when you're sitting here, but out in the community, to support our schools. Two members of the board were with me Saturday morning as we assessed the damages, so to speak. So, you know, this isn't a round-the-clock responsibility. Being a board member today is challenging. It's not always easy, and we are grateful for your support, your advocacy, and truly knowing that the decisions you make as an individual representative on the board, as well as a collective Board of Education, are always in the best interest of the students. So we thank you for that. You have in front of you a token of our appreciation. The gift this year is something that was handcrafted for you by our students, and it is one very small example of the way that we live our theme this year of let kindness ripple. So I ask that you open your gift. There's a card for me as well, you can read that at another time. So let's take out your gift. Sorry, there's a noise on Zoom. There's also a ticket with the bowl, and this is, on your behalf, we have made a donation to the Empty Bowls Project, which will be held this April. And Chase and Katie are both members of NHS, so they did not receive a bowl, they received something a little different. Our student representatives to our board were just as appreciative to them. They have let kindness ripple, a water bottle, and a little gift card to Grassroots, because I don't know about you, but I feel like that's one of the best places in Granby for you to have a little treat. But Chase and Katie, would you just take a minute maybe to share with the board members a little bit about the Empty Bowls Project from the NHS?
Yeah. So with the upcoming change, from spring to winter comes a student-favorite event at Granby Memorial High School, Empty Bowls. The GMHS National Honor Society annually holds the Empty Bowls Dinner, which this year will be held Friday, April 26, 2024, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the GMHS new cafeteria. Empty Bowls is a GMHS-united delicious soups and handmade artisan bowls and a silent auction to help raise money to support food banks in our community. Each ticket comes with a handmade bowl, a handmade ceramic bowl, and unlimited soup and bread that are generously donated by local establishments.
Yeah, you know, this show is a wonderful event. Like, we're lucky enough to be around it all year, pretty much, and see everything that goes into it, but even last year, having been around it a lot, you attend the event yourself, and you realize just how great of an event it is and how much it brings the community together. The bowls have either been donated by local artists, or they have been handcrafted, glazed, fired, totally made in-house by students, alumni, staff, faculty, really everyone you can imagine. It is a true community effort. The silent auction as well brings in local businesses with gift cards, local artist creations, some memberships up for auction, and it really is a wonderful event. It's $15 for soup and a bowl. It will be $10 per soup and bowl for a family of three, and it's just $8 for soup only. So we encourage you to go.
Yes, you can bring your bowl with you and engage, or you can come and just enjoy the event. But these bowls were handcrafted for you as our board members. A little sneak peek to see, Mrs. Powell and I enjoyed picking them. Enjoy, and thank you for all you do as a board. And thank you, Chase and Katie, for your representatives. Student reps, we do appreciate your participation as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much, Superintendent Burke. These are beautiful. Lovely. All right, we are going to keep on moving along to public comment. Granby community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to about five minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. As we usually do, we're going to go ahead and start public comment with the people that are here in the room, and then we are going to move on to those who are attending via Zoom. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make public comment, please enter so in the chat so we can make sure that you're in the queue. All right, is there anyone in the room who would like to make public comment? Please step up and identify yourself.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Casey Petrucci. I'm a high school teacher, or a science teacher over at the high school here in town, and I'm here tonight in my capacity as the president of the Granby Education Association. I'd like to start by thanking all of the board members again. It's good that you got your recognition tonight. This is very hard work that you do for the volunteer job that you have taken on, and your community should be very grateful for everything that you put into it. I want to acknowledge that you have challenging tasks and volunteer your time and your hard work on behalf of residents and students, and I'm not here to tell you what to do with your budget, even though I know that's a big part of your discussion later on. But rather, I'd like to bring a perspective to your conversation, that of the staff's response to decisions that are made about our schools. Teacher recruitment and retention is a challenge statewide. We have historically in Granby had excellent teachers who worked long tenures in our system that have built robust programming, as well as deep relationships with our students and their families. In recent years, our turnover has presented challenges to maintaining some of that consistency and high quality. Onboarding employees always comes with a learning curve and takes time and resources away from colleagues and management that could be devoted to other worthwhile needs. The association raised the issue of competitive pay in our contract negotiations this past fall, and many members of the community demonstrated their support for our educators, and we thank them for that. We're concerned at this point that for some decision-makers, wallets might be outweighing concern for quality education as we go forward for our students. Cutting 6.0 FTEs may be a function of finding efficiencies right now, but the message cuts like these can send to new and potential hires as unreliable job security. If we're looking to recruit quality talent, this will compound our problems, not solve them. Efficiencies mean we're asking the remaining staff to provide the same or better product with less time, collaboration, perhaps more responsibilities, as we take on what was done by someone else before. We want to provide excellent opportunities for our students, but we can't cobble them together on the cheap. Specifically, employees relegated to part-time status will have other, better options in other districts, leaving us trying to cover what is left with existing staff or trying to onboard new colleagues mid-year, transitions that are tough on students as well as staff. We've had numerous staff take on extra teaching sections this year alone, just to cover some of those shortages. Next year, your contract obligations will increase in cost. Special education services will likely increase in cost, if history is any guide. The cost of electricity, fuel, food supplies, and other services is not likely to decrease. What will we do then, when all the efficiencies have been found? At the end of the COVID shutdown, the school system gave a lot of unspent dollars back to the town. At the time, Ms. Emery, who was on the Board of Education then, made a point of noting that at least some of that unspent money meant education lost, not just money saved. To reiterate that point, education is a service industry that costs money to do this process well with fidelity. If we don't pay for the quality we want in dollars, we will pay the price in other ways. So please, and in this budget cycle, but more importantly for the future, consider what you're being asked to do to cut these services to meet a figure. You have an obligation to the students, their families, and your employees, not just taxpayers in your town. I appreciate being able to come up and give you these remarks tonight. I understand that there would be no rebuttal to them, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to make public comment? Seeing no one in the room who's going to speak, is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to make public comment? Did anyone answer in the chat? Okay. All right, at this time, I am closing public comment. Moving on to the student representative reports, Chase and Katie.
Okay, so spring sports are well along the way, because they've been practicing for like at least a week now. And hopefully, the weather's going to get good for them soon, hopefully warmer, since they're all outdoors. So boys lacrosse will have their first scrimmage Thursday, March 21st, at four, at home against Weathersfield. On the same day, girls lacrosse will have their first scrimmage, but away at Hall. Baseball's first scrimmage will be Friday, March 22nd, at 3:30, away at Gilbert. Softball will later have their scrimmage Saturday, March 30th, at 10:30, away in Windsor. Boys tennis, their first scrimmage will be Tuesday, March 26th, at 3:15, away at Newington. And later that day, girls tennis will have their first scrimmage at 4:30 at home against Haddon Pillinworth. Track will have their first meet April 2nd, at 3:45, away at Ellington. And in addition to this, baseball and softball team, they're running a fundraiser together. They're doing a golden ticket fundraiser, where you pay $25 for a very large sheet of coupons for many local establishments, like Jake's Wayback, Lockstocks, True Value, and even Metro Beast. You can purchase these in a link in their Instagram bios or directly from them during school or at games. Their Instagrams are either @GranbyBaseball or @GranbySoftball.
Yeah, so I think we can all understand from Katie's update that this really is the busy season. March Madness, there isn't much more accurate term for it. I know before the meeting started, we were talking about some of our favorite games, and today, in advisory, GMHS students participated in a world language and culture jeopardy game, answering questions about different cultures and testing their knowledge about the world. And that was very eye-opening. As was already mentioned, Footloose was held this past weekend. I had the pleasure of attending. I can say it was absolutely magnificent, very, very enjoyed it, great to watch. There will be a FAFSA completion workshop next Wednesday, March 27th, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. That is at the same time when the SAT will be taken by juniors, and it is open to families who are interested in learning more about the federal financial aid process. An NHS-sponsored first responders dinner will be held in the high school cafeteria tomorrow night, inviting local first responders to enjoy a meal that is organized completely by National Honor Society. I believe that starts at 6:00 p.m. tomorrow. And then the last week, student government will be hosting a dodgeball tournament on Friday that goes from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's a fun fundraiser. I know that we have 11 or 12 teams already signed up, so we're looking forward to that. That's where they are.
That sounds great. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to move along now to reports and discussions, schools in the spotlight. I have a feeling that's why many are here this evening. I believe we have Ms. Anne Buckley.
Yes, so Principal Tanis is here, and Anne Buckley is her science teacher, is also here, and then they have a group of students with them. Yeah, all the students can join, yeah.
Yeah, this is purely coincidence that we have some fish here. This has been planned for quite some time, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking. You're in for a real treat. I got to see many of these students in action just on Friday, so they have something excellent prepared for you this evening.
Thank you. Excuse me. Good evening, Superintendent Burke, Mrs. Logan, and the Board of Education members, Mrs. Tanis, Mr. Hemingway, and the GEF members, parents, and community members. Thank you for having us here tonight. So for 17 years, I've been in the shadow of Sue Allender, who has run the Ecology Center up until her retirement last spring, and so I inherited the responsibility. I've shared a document with the board, just so you have a timeline to see what happens from basically the beginning of the school until mid-May, and then also what happens daily on a regular basis. So I'm not going to go through that, but you can look at that, just to get an idea of the time and the effort that goes into keeping the Ecology Center running on a daily So it's a great responsibility, but that being said, it's one of the best parts of working at GMMMS. It allows me to see students in a different light. Sometimes I have students in the classroom who, you know, sitting at a desk and doing stuff at a desk isn't their highlight of their day, but I take them out to the Ecology Center, and they're a completely different kid, and they are really invested in what we are doing out there. So I have that privilege of having two, basically two classrooms, where I do, you know, hands-on real-life learning and then regular kind of school learning. So I'm pretty fortunate to have that. Tonight, I've brought six students with me to share about their experiences with the Ecology Center. I have three 7th graders who regularly go out to the Ecology Center with their science classes, and that's Tommy Leducer, Callum Tamala, and Noah Woodward. And then I have two 7th grade students and an 8th grade student who are part of the Fish Club, who is also advised by Mr. Cody. He's not here tonight. And that would be Evie Buns, Annabelle Leto, and Tommy Erickson. So each student is going to present a little bit of something about the Ecology Center. They may ask you questions or ask you to participate, so please don't hesitate to interact with us. So I am going to introduce Noah, and Noah is going to talk to us about what is in the Ecology Center building.
So in the Ecology Center, there are three tanks for raising juveniles, which are like the bigger fish. So there's also a nursery tank, which holds the small fish, and the tank that is under it is like a regular tank, but it has a nursery on top of it. And then it has two stories, one for the tanks in the classroom that's on the bottom, and the other is for mechanical and water pressure, so that's the top. And then upstairs, the system, and downstairs, too. So when students visit the center for the first time, they are asked to make a model of the system and figure out how the water flows throughout the system, and if it is an open or closed system. This supports the NGSS cross-cutting concept of systems and system models, as well as the NGSS scientific and engineering practices of developing and using models. So based on this diagram, is the system a closed system or open system?
Open.
Open system? It is a closed system. So as you can see, it is open, rarely, where the well of water pumps in water through a pipe, and it gets circulated into the system.
It's a trick question.
So at the holding tank, the water will go into these main pipes over Tank 4, Tank 3, and Tank 2, and they go into the tanks, and the water circulates and goes into the sump, which pumps the water back up through a UV sterilizer, so that kind of gets rid of all the bacteria, and then it goes through a chiller, and then it gets cold again to the trout's normal temperature, and then it heads back down to the holding tank, so it can be used again. The next up, Callum will introduce the classroom and the Ecology Center.
So a few examples of the lessons that we do in the Ecology Center. We're waiting for our turn to feed the fish. We feed the fish like around a week or so, like one time each week.
As a class?
As a class. We make graphs and read about... We make graphs and we read about drawing the life cycle of the fish, looking at Alvin under the microscopes. Alvin are practically the, like, not really the egg, but like the next stage above the egg. I don't know what that's called. And planting seeds and learning about hydroponics and learning about the bacteria that will help. Next, I would like to introduce Tommy Leducer, who will talk about weights and measures.
Every month, we catch the fish in the tank and measure how long they have gotten and how much they weigh. This allows us to use the overall health, as well as it helps us determine how much food they should be given. Could I have two volunteers to weigh and measure fish?
All right.
Do I have to touch the fish?
Sort of. Do I go down? Rosemary needs a partner. All right, I'll go with Rosemary.
Go in, wear my gloves.
All right. I'll join you.
You gloves?
I'll take a picture. Help me measuring.
Right?
Oh, yeah, right? Measuring fish. There they are, I seen them. Yeah. So we're actually going to measure our fake fish first, okay?
I can do that.
You're going to, like I do when I'm out there, so you can explain what's going to happen.
So what you want to do with the net is walk through, put it like this, then put it here with your left hand, and we scoop the fake fish with your right hand.
This helps me... You're going to tell me if I'm doing this right?
Yeah.
Okay, something like that, and then I'm going to scoop the fake fish?
Yeah.
Do I release the bottom part of it this time?
No.
Okay. I got one. I got one.
So now what we do with it is...
Yeah, of course.
And then...
Oh, and then I...
And someone would usually, like, be interested, and someone would deal with a sheet parking this down.
Oh, got it.
And then there's usually like a bucket that you put it back in, but right now, I can just put it back.
The fake fish back in the sheet, okay. Okay. How'd I do?
Good.
In there? Creole.
I made for a close to say.
I'm not going to do that, not going to see it.
Release it back in, okay? We usually measure five at a time. Oh, we measure five at a time. Wait, five at a time.
Yeah, we measure five at a time and then we wait.
Okay. That's good. Perfect. And we'll just play that for the time of interest. Thanks, guys. All right. Okay. So who are we introducing next? Okay, next will be Tommy Erickson to talk to us about the nursery.
So...
Get going, there we go.
So these are the eggs, right? We, and that's the stage we get them in. And they, those are the trays that they will live in and hatch in. And that stage that we see these in, the eggs are in, are called the eyed egg stage, because you can, as you can see, the little black dot would be called the eye. Sorry. So do you think that temperature affects the time it takes to hatch the eggs?
Yes. I would think so, like a chicken, right?
Yeah. Since you guys said yes, you were all correct. Temperature definitely affects it. The warmer the water, the faster it will develop. And our eggs were spawned on November 8th, and they arrived on January 8th. They will hatch, and they hatched on February 4th. And we kept the water pretty cold, because we do not need to keep them from hatching too soon, because they create a lot of work to take care of and sometimes we don't have that much of time to do that. So the newly hatched trout are called alvents, right? And they do not need to be fed, because they have a yolk sac, which contains all of its nutrients. On the screen, it shows you, right? And so this depends... And how many days do you think that it would take for an alvin to start eating? Any guesses?
To start eating it?
Yeah, to start, or to start after it's used up the yolk sac. How many days do you...
Oh. Three.
Actually, it's a week. It would take our fry 30 days to use up the whole yolk sac.
Wow.
So it lasts pretty long, surprisingly.
Okay, next slide?
Yeah. Once the eggs hatch, and the alvin have used up most of their yolk sac, they are now considered fry. And fry is the stage after alvin, of course. And this is the time where we move them into that tank, right? As you can see in the right picture, it's a lot of them. And so we can begin feeding them by conveyor belt. And as you can see on that picture, that's the conveyor belt. Now, the food is smaller, because they do not have as big as a mouse, a mouth, as the bigger trout, right? And, yeah. And now I'm going to introduce Evie Buns, who will talk about hydroponics.
Okay, so what is hydroponics? Hydroponics is the art of gardening without soil. It's a Latin word meaning working water. Without soil, water is responsible for supplying nutrients and water to plants. This year, we're growing snap peas, basils, and zinnia. Hydroponics uses 90% less water than traditional agriculture, and the hydroponic gardens grow beautiful sprigs and flowers in half the time a normal garden could. So in our system, we have water supplied by the waste tank under the sub-tank. It's pumped from the barrel every six hours into the tank under the plants, soaking up the rock wool, which is like, instead of using soil for our plants, we have like, it's kind of like a sponge where we put it in and you can mold it to the shape of the little plant that we put them in. And we like nestle the seeds in, and then it kind of like just helps them grow in a better spot. And it soaks up the water, which makes it so that they have it. Then the water siphons out back into the barrel, and occasionally we add a little bit of Miracle-Gro, since the fish waste doesn't like fully provide enough nutrients sometimes. And light's provided by a grow lamp 12 hours a day. And then, next slide please. So this picture shows the hydroponic system, because it like, if you look at the bottom, that's where all of the water would be from the fish, and there's the nutrients in it. And the rock wool and the planters, it like soaks up, again, it soaks up all of the water and nutrients that it needs, and it goes into the plants, which are held in like that Styrofoam platform, so they stay in place. And I'd love to introduce that.
What do Fish Kids do? In Fish Kids, we clean the tanks and the other parts of the fish, like at the Ecology Center. We feed the fish, and we have Deep come and talk to us about different career options or job opportunities that we can do, like working at a fish nursery. We learn about the fish and how to take care of them, and we test in the water to make sure it's safe for the fish. And then at the end, we release the fish into like the lake. Fish Kid meets once a week after school, and it's... Next slide. Okay. Jobs in the Ecology Center consist of feeding the fish, cleaning the tanks, vacuuming the tanks, managing the water pressure and air pressure, incubate the eggs, if you have the eggs. And necessary things that need to be done are manage the air temperature, manage water pressure, and manage air levels, manage the water temperature, and make sure they have a clean environment. In Fish Kids, you have a lot of responsibilities to do, but it's fun and gives you a chance to learn more about responsibility with aquatic creatures. The first thing we do when we enter the Ecology Center is wash our hands, so no lotions, perfumes, et cetera, contaminate the water. One of our tasks each week is measuring the food for the weekend for our volunteers who come to feed.
Oh, yeah. So next slide. When we clean the tanks, we drain out a lot of the water, which allows us to get a really good look at the fish to make sure that they look healthy. And the best part is that we get to pet them. If you look at the pictures, you can see how low the water is. And we actually have some, like, I'm pretty sure it's that one, we have a pretty big fish in there. And when the water gets really low, all of the fish like bunch up together, and they stay in one spot, so it's a lot easier to clean.
Scrubbing the tanks is essential for keeping our system clean. Overtime, algae builds up, and we scrub a different tank each week. Sadly, on last Friday, we had a pipers leading from the well in the softball field to the Ecology Center.
Due to the fact that we were unsure if we would be able to have fresh water come to the fish healthy, Ms. Buckley made the difficult decision to have Deep come and get the fish, to stock them in the farming food river.
Fortunately, we still have the babies, and we will be able to release those in a few weeks. And so there's some pictures of us at that sad day that we had to give them back to Deep. But we still had fun doing so. And please come up, if you want, and see our plants and fry, and measure some food, weigh and measure a fish, and ask us questions, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So if you'd like to come up quickly and see how they measure the food, or look at the babies, see our plants and how they're planted, I know we don't have a lot of time, but they'd love to show you. How big do they normally have to be for you to release them? Is there a certain measure?
Not, like, they just have to be not small.
Okay. They were just on the verge of... Yeah, no, but I did lay in a normal force. Is there a certain size? 10 to 11 inches? Okay. Well, we forgot them.
Just real quickly, before we turn to there, I would love to, the Ecology Center was a gift to us by the Grammy Education Foundation. I think it was the very first gift that they would have given. And we have the founder and the individual who raised all the money for the Ecology Center here, Mr. Cal Hemingway. So if you would like to step up as well, we would love you to... We also have the current...
I'm here to watch.
Well, you're here. Aren't you proud of these kids?
I would like to say one thing, it being budget season, is that the entire Ecology Center, and all the stuff that's in there, was raised from the town, because they wanted to support, in this case, Bruce Bone, who was a middle school teacher. He made my life difficult for about three years, until we created the Grammy Education Foundation to raise the money. But we raised something in terms of cash and equipment, about a half a million dollars in 1937 something.
Yeah. Thank you.
And there was not more than a penny of cash left. And that's important compared with using the school budget. We should, we're very happy, and I don't think we blow our horn up.
I agree.
We have a unique facility. Obviously, you guys are wearing something for it. I don't think that you want to borrow it from a real people who are clearly, which is part of the system.
Thank you. Callus is also former board chair for many years, right?
I understand that you had a broken pipe.
We had a broken pipe on Friday, and that's why the fish had to be quickly given to Deep and released earlier than planned. But the pipe was repaired, and they still have the babies that they're able to raise. Yeah.
Do you provide some fish in the leadership? We don't do anything without their permission, especially that many fish, many people who like to catch fish, know what is going to happen and where.
I think we have one. I think we're here, on the board, who like to catch fish. Those trout need to be related. So thank you very much. Thank you for being here as well. Very much appreciate it. And of course, the current chair of GFE, I'd like to join up here as well.
Actually, it's a teacher.
Yes. She's saying it's a sponge. It's almost, it's almost like a sponge.
It's like art, it's...
Oh, yeah. We got that attached to the fish, like, she likes... The baby's... Yeah. We're fine here.
No, go for it.
So before we, and then I ask all the kids to get together, and we can take a quick picture, and then we've got a big agenda ahead of us, so... You guys want to get a picture? I need my lights. Sorry. I'm running a very fast... No, you better go over here, because that light is going to let us take a nice picture. Sorry. Okay. I don't think that could be a... Thank you. Great job. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. I'm going to give a special shout out to Ms. Anne Buckley as well, who came in over the weekend to take care of the fish, the baby fish, while we were working on the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, these are the fun parts of our meeting, where we get to do things like that, and then we have to talk about money.
Miss Manager.
All right. Thank you, everyone. If anybody, it looks like everybody has cleared out. Feel free to get up and you decided not to say that. So we're going to welcome our business manager, Anna Robbins.
Thank you. So this evening, we're reviewing the statement of accounts as of February 29th, 2024. The general fund shows an unfavorable full year forecast of $91,000, which is $150,000 better than the previous month. Regular education is projected to be under budget, $56,000, which is $25,000 better than the previous month. We will continue to monitor the line items closely in order to achieve the forecasted balances in each of the accounts. The district deadline for purchase orders this year was March 15th, and so the changes in the forecast that you see in front of you reflect the deadline for encumbering funds for the remainder of the year. The special education forecast is over budget $148,000, which is $125,000 better than the previous month. The main driver of the over budget condition for special education is now out of district tuition, as student instructional needs and placements continue to fluctuate. However, the special education out of district transportation line item is currently under budget by $23,000, which is $10,000 better than it was last month. Our People's Services Department and transportation provider have worked diligently to consolidate transportation where possible. Revenue to the town is projected to be unfavorable, $294,000, which is $12,000 worse than the previous month. The major contributor to the negative variance is the fluctuation in special education excess cost reimbursement. And of course, as our special education costs go down, we were favorable this month, the excess cost reimbursement also goes down. The forecast for the Quality and Diversity Fund continues to be positive, which is due to a strong opening balance from the previous fiscal year. So things are looking up in February.
That is excellent, Anna. Thank you very much. All right. We are moving on to the first reading of revised policy 3542.43, food service charging. The curriculum policy we recommend, actually Karen, this goes to you, you could just...
Yes, I was getting the notes from the last time we met. So the last time that the curriculum subcommittee meeting, curriculum, this curriculum subcommittee met was on Wednesday, March 6th, and at that time, Assistant Superintendent Jennifer Parsons shared with us the information about taking up the auditor's suggestions for some edits to our food charging policy. And they were not major edits, I don't believe, but it was interesting to see how things have changed very slightly. How much detail do you want? Is that good?
That's good.
The forecast for the Quality and Diversity Fund continues to be positive, which is due to a strong opening balance from the previous fiscal year. So things are looking up in February.
That is excellent, Anna. Thank you very much. All right. We are moving on to the first reading of revised policy 3542.43, food service charging. The curriculum policy we recommend, actually Karen, this goes to you. You could just...
Yes, I was getting the notes from the last time we met. So the last time that the curriculum subcommittee meeting, curriculum, this curriculum subcommittee met was on Wednesday, March 6th. And at that time, Assistant Superintendent Jennifer Parsons shared with us the information about taking up the auditor's suggestions for some edits to our food charging policy. And they were not major edits, I don't believe, but it was interesting to see how things have changed very slightly. How much detail do you want? Is that good?
That's good.
Okay.
Just a first reading. So then we will have the second and final reading at our next meeting. Thank you so much, Karen. All right. Moving on, business requiring action regarding our minutes from the March 6th, 2024 Board of Education meeting. Let's start there. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that the Granby Board of Education approve the minutes from March 6th Board of Education meeting and March 13th. Oh, do you want to do two?
Dave, can you do some further discussion? I think we have some extensions. Do we have, do I have a second for the March 6th approval?
Second.
Thank you, Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That carries. Next up, we have the approval of the minutes from the March 13th Board of Education Budget Workshop. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that the Granby Board of Education approve the minutes from the March 13th Board of Education Budget Workshop.
I'll second.
Thank you, Heather. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
I'll abstain because I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Now we have our budget discussion, and we will hopefully work our way to an approval if we can. And Sherry.
Thank you. If I could have the PowerPoint up, please. Last Wednesday, we met in our first opportunity for Budget Workshop. And so I will provide just a high level of where we are at this point. And then I have some answers to the questions and topics that were discussed. And then both Anna and I are available to answer any further questions and support your discussion with the goal of coming away from the meeting this evening with a Board of Education adapted budget. So this is our friendly chart that identifies FY '24 budget and the increases for the FY '25 year. You can see that we have seen increases in just about every single area. We have been able to keep our additional additions to 1/10 of a percent, and in large part due to reduction in personnel at 1.75%. We are currently working with the superintendent's proposed budget, which is 5.67% over last year's operating budget. This did engage in a reduction of $488,096. Those reductions were realized through staff reductions, overall reducing the lines and supplies, checks, and workbooks. Our heating oil costs did come in slightly lower than expected. And we are currently working towards guidance from the Board of Finance at 5.43%. And so I will share with you, you know, where we are now. Our total appropriation does include the Quality and Diversity Fund, which is primarily our open choice grant funding, and our Small Capital Fund appropriation, which is $1,050,000 from the Board of Finance Fund annually. And so the total appropriation is $40,325,034. So at our workshop, we came away with a few topics for further discussion. And so I will go through those now. The first topic for conversation was the addition of a .2 FTE. This is aligned to a new course that was adopted this fall, Strength and Conditioning and Human Performance. I was asked to just look a little bit more into the course itself to provide some additional information. This course is a half-year experience. Students engage in the opportunity to better understand weight training and conditioning, and it's closely aligned to anatomy and physiology. So this will provide students with an opportunity for a STEM credit. This is not a PE or health credit. It actually aligns to our graduation requirements for STEM. There was some conversation about whether or not students would be able to receive a certification. Assistant Superintendent Parsons shared with us that students will explore the different professions, such as athletic training, exercise science. These are very popular topics for students. We have many student athletes that want to know for their own personal gain how to promote a healthy lifestyle, as well as that as a career pathway. And students will have the opportunity to understand what it entails if they wish to apply for a personal trainer certification. And there is opportunity for us to explore some dual credit, you know, with a community college or other opportunities in the future. So as we talked about, there are currently 32 students that have selected this course as an opportunity for next school year. We have looked closely at the course selections of our students. And as I shared last week, this is an iterative process. We are still working closely to identify what students wish to take and what will fit in their schedules, their meeting with individual counselors. We do believe that this particular course will be able to run without the additional FTE. The question was posed last year, last year, feels like a year, last week, as to whether or not, given that some students are now going to choose this new course as an elective, perhaps they're not choosing a different elective in the same numbers. It does look as though that will shake out. It's not certain to yet. And, you know, to Ms. Petrucci's earlier point, having 1.0 FTEs for our staff is really critical. When they're less than a part-time, we do tend to see teachers engage in full-time opportunities. But we are committed to keeping our teachers engaged. And as you know, we're looking at a number of shifts at the high school. I shared with you last week that we're looking at a reduction of one FTE in science, at least a .6, perhaps more, in math. So there may be an opportunity to pick up this .2 in another area. Those are all things that are, you know, in process right now. Another question or topic of consideration is the administration at the high school. You know, how does our leadership structure compare to other like high schools? The board has a data sheet in your packet with 30 comparable districts, so that you can certainly dig into this, or we can answer questions about it a little later in the opportunity to discuss the budget. But we are squarely average with our counterparts as far as the three leadership positions. Some of them are Director of Guidance, or Director of School Counseling is actually a more appropriate terminology, Assistant Principal, maybe a Dean, maybe a Dean and Assistant Principal and a Principal. So some iteration of three adults in that leadership capacity. And so you see here that I identified some possible organization ideas, which I will work towards with my administrative team. We did already assume a $50,000 reduction in the administrative line. And there was some question last week about how we arrived at that number. So under further, another look, Anna and I looked more closely at how we came about that number. We looked at a high teacher's salary, perhaps with a stipend, as compared to the current Assistant Principal. So it is about a $50,000 difference. So whether we went with a new administrator at that low level, which is about $45,000 difference, or if we went with a more seasoned teacher with perhaps a Dean of Students or a leader in the counseling office, we have already assumed the savings for that particular reorganization. The other topic that we discussed quite a bit, and Dave Pelling and myself and Monica got up and walked the baseball field this weekend and took a close look while we were out there exploring our ecology center. So I did have a couple of opportunities to meet with our Athletic Director, Brian Mottese, high school administration, and our Director of Facilities. So what improvements have already been made? We spoke about this in the fall. There was an appropriation made in order to improve upon the sprinkler system. That was done this late summer, early fall, and the field was overseeded this fall. It's a little too early to see the fruits of that labor, but we are very optimistic that the grass is going to come in thicker. And most importantly, the sprinkler system is working, and that is going to make a significant difference. It's been an ill repair over the last few years. The baselines have been measured, repositioned, and edged. I think we all agreed when we were out there that it's looking much improved. I learned that some of our bases were off by as much as 20 inches. That's pretty considerable. And so everything has been taken out, not only repositioned, but re-anchored with new, the appropriate way that you're supposed to anchor bases, which I won't pretend to know exactly what that is. But I understand they were being held in by a method that was not sufficient. That's all been redone. The pitcher's mound, as we speak, is being assessed and repaired. It may need to be refilled with some additional clay. Right now, it's being tilled up and taken a look at. A new pitching machine was purchased, and that is something that was purchased in the operating budget and is also being supported with the athletic boosters because there was a need for some additional batteries and things like that for longevity of use. And so that was a little bit of a partnership to make sure that that pitching machine could be used. What repairs are needed? We're currently researching water. It's been an ongoing need to have a water accessible. So I was out there, spoke with Shannon Sullivan, and we do think that there is a solution for that, to access water, to be able to wet down the field when it gets dusty. We are currently researching the need and the cost for like a warning track. It's a low cost. It's more about manpower, but we do think that that's something that could be done relatively soon. And then there is a conversation happened yesterday with the athletic booster to ask about the donation of a new net for the batting cages. That is something that they would donate to us. And if there are volunteers interested, we are looking to purchase the paint to get a fresh coat of paint on the dugouts. That was a suggestion that Mr. Pelling had. And everyone's agreeable that that would be really wonderful, to give us a nice, fresh coat of paint. We all know in our own homes, that goes a long way, right? Makes it look fresh and new. What is the role of the boosters, right? And how do they support us? So we have three different booster organizations currently. We do have the football booster, and that is focused on football. As you know, they originally funded the program. They continue to fund the program. Anna, if I'm remembering correctly, football funds our football, football boosters funds our football program entirely. Coaches only?
No. We do make a contribution from the budget, a standard contribution of $26,000, and they fund, we're making.
The rest, okay. Because football programs are quite costly. And it is a co-op with Canton Carr as well. Okay. And then we have an athletic booster, and that athletic booster funds all other sports. And I learned a bit about the process for that. So typically, any needs are brought to, or the coach would bring those needs to our Athletic Director, Brian Mottese. He then reaches out and meets regularly with the presidents of the booster club, and they allocate funding equitably. They really stress how important it is for them to be able to give to a variety of sports. And that's sometimes challenging, depending on the sport. Some sports need more equipment or have more spectators or whatever. But it's something that the booster is committed to doing. And then we have a new, I think Monica mentioned it earlier, we have a new booster just created. It's off to a fantastic start, and that's Fab, which I love the abbreviation, Fine Arts Booster. And they are actively working to support drama, the arts, and our music programs. That's really great. Oops, sorry about that. Just a little bit more, are there safety concerns? We walk the fields. I had information shared with me that, you know, there's a significant difference between a natural field and a turf field. We have to remember, we're very fortunate, we have two turf fields here on the Granby Memorial High School campus. But we don't feel that it's any less safe than any other natural field. There are moles, there are some dips in the grass. We're constantly patching them and filling them in. You know, that imbalance of weeds with grass, certainly something that they're always working hard at. Are there options to use other fields was the question. Absolutely, the freshman soccer team could be best to Salmon Brook because they do use the back of that outfield. The cost would be about $500 a week. The folks I met with don't feel that that is a negative for the outfield, felt that it, you know, it's reasonable use, but it is something that we could explore. Aaron's Park is a regulation baseball field. The general consensus was that Aaron's Park isn't in any better condition than our baseball field. And we could certainly continue to explore options for the middle school recess because we know that there are times that the kids wander onto the interior side of that baseball field, but we work hard to keep them off. Additional solutions? We brainstormed an idea of a seasonal groundskeeper, thinking about a 16-week period. Dale and Shannon, who I consulted with, felt that this is their absolute busiest time, not only for spring sports, but also set up for graduation and so many special events. They do a lot of planting. They do a lot of, you know, initial weeding, weed whacking and edging. And it is very time-consuming. We talked about how viable it would be to find someone. But we do have, you know, folks that engage with us in other part-time capacities, like lunch monitors and folks that drive our buses and different things like that. So if the hours were flexible, which these would be, we thought that that might be something to consider, seeing as that part-time groundskeeper may not be something we can support. But that's there as well. A number of years ago, there was an interest in garnering quotes to install turf for the infield only for both baseball and softball. Turf is very expensive. At that time, it was approximately $1 million per field. However, it does pay back over the life of the field. So with baseball fields, I didn't know this, you can just do the infield. And it significantly cuts down on maintenance and wear and tear and has a pretty good longevity. So those are just some options that we discussed that I thought I would share with you. And so those are the topics that were brought to my attention. So where we left off last Wednesday was if the BOE accepts the previous recommendations, the superintendent's proposed budget, including the additional reductions that were shared, you have a remaining $4,682 in reductions to make. If you did want to explore a seasonal groundskeeper, which is the only new idea that I have shared with you, we're thinking it's approximately $8,000. That would raise your total reduction to $12,682. The considerations that you were discussing last time, do not add the .2. That was a reduction to the superintendent's proposal of $13,431. Perhaps add a .1 to get that FTE to a .9. That's a $6,715 reduction. One lunch monitor, we know that they're sometimes hard to find, so perhaps we want to reduce that. And then further reduce supply budgets across all of the schools at whatever dollar amount you're looking for. In this case, it was $4,682. So I think it would be best, Monica, certainly at your discretion, to open for additional questions or clarifications. But that's all I've prepared in a formal way for you tonight.
Okay. I think that's exactly what we should do. I'm going to open this up for discussion. Thoughts, opinions? Is everyone pondering the different ramifications of our choices?
Actually, I have a question. So just to, if I understand this last slide. So if with the recommendations, let's go back here. I guess the easiest way to do it is to look back here. So the recommendations that were made. We're back over here. So to achieve the 5.43 requires a reduction of $86,745. So those were the, so that's what got us to the $82,000. That's what left, that we still had, we're still short $4,682 to get to that magic number.
Correct. So if you assume the proposed budget, which includes all the things we've already talked about, you know, the reduction of Mandarin, one grade at a time phasing that out, the reduction of Spanish instruction at Kelly and Wells. reduction of Spanish instruction at Kelly and Wells, the reduction of some TAs, the addition of some special TAs, that whole very comprehensive that we've now looked at a couple of times, then we left that first proposal looking for a total of 86,745 to meet the guidelines that we were given. And so, Anna and I and administration provided feedback that allowed us to provide you with an additional reduction of 82. So we, and we almost hit it perfectly, primarily because we assumed an additional participant, no longer taking a family plan of insurance. We did reduce our dues and fees, it's a, it's a long list of professional organizations and different things that administrators and, and primarily myself, that we aren't going to do. And then, we had an additional retirement locked in at a better price for our diesel fuel, so that got us $82,063. So, what we're, if you agree with this list, and you don't want to revisit anything from our earlier conversations of the superintendent's proposed, which is all on the table for you as the board, then, don't look, go fast, then we're here.
Right.
The 4,682. Given the conversation, the public comment from last time, I was asked to look for some creative ideas, and so I, I was able to come up with, with one relatively small fee there, but that's for your discussion. So depending on where we'd like to go next, I was asked to make some recommendations, and that's what you see here.
So, just looking at this, if we did add in the additional $8,000 for a part-time groundskeeper to help with the baseball and softball, softball fields, so we're looking at a shortfall of $12,682. If we did not add that .2 FTE for the strength training, which you said you felt may be able to be assumed in other FTEs anyway, it almost is a wash to get there.
That's correct.
So, in my mind, that would be my recommendation, if that's what gets us there. And I know you were very concerned about the ball fields, and I think that's a way to get at least some attention TLC for the ball fields as well, and take care of some of the people who are at our budget meeting, budget workshop, that were very concerned about the ball fields, and, and I appreciate their concern, and, you know, we want all of our athletes to feel that they are getting the best fields we can provide within reason. So that would be my recommendation, I think that gets us there. If anyone has any other thoughts on it.
It's not necessarily cutting the strength classes, it's just, might mean some larger classes or that kind of thing.
Yeah. Jen, can I put you on the spot for just a second? We have been looking very, very carefully at the course selections that students have made, and Jen is really amazing at this. And you might remember, last week I said, "Well, if Jen Parsons were here, that would be exactly the questions she would be asking." I think you asked-
I was the one that asked.
We only have so many students to go around, and as we offer more electives, when children choose one thing, they're not choosing something else. And can you just speak to that for a minute?
Yes. So, when we look at the overall electives, you're right, some students shift from one choice to another. There's only so many slots in their schedule, just like there's only so many slots in a class for students. So, I, Sherry and I are working with the high school very carefully in the upcoming weeks, but we do believe that we could potentially still offer the class, at least one section of the class, within the existing FTE if that were needed. It would mean that other classes would become a little bit larger, if, so we would be choosing not to add additional sections. Still be within class-sized guidelines, but on the higher end instead of the lower end.
Right. I'm curious about the course selection process at the high school. So when students select their, all of the potential classes they want to take, have the schedules, and when, what periods those classes have been offered, have been decided yet, or is that something that happens later?
No, so that actually happens in the April to June timeframe, and so, I'm sure our students could speak to it too, but in February, in January, they're learning about their recommendations, in February, they're selecting courses. In March, the administration is really crunching all those numbers to determine when we run everything in the schedule, we have to tell the system certain parameters, and then the system places everybody where, where they should be. But we're looking at that exact thing right now, the requests. If only four or five students are choosing a course, we probably won't be able to run that. There's harder conversations when you get up into the nine to 13 range, right? And looking at what's our available staffing, and what, you know, will we need to add more staff to run a class, would we need to, if there's not enough classes, you know, how would we do that the other way too?
And if there are 32 kids that want to take that, but some of them end up having a required class during whatever block that was supposed to be, then they won't all get in anyway.
Correct. But we do think we can still, because the subcommittee approves the course, we do still think that we can run at least one section of the course and meet the majority of the need for this year. It would just be, we're kind of delaying the inevitable probably with, with wellness and, and waiting another year to ask for an app.
The other option would be that we, when we look at all the numbers, we in fact do need a .2 in our health and PE department, but perhaps we can go down a .2 somewhere else. These processes do not align perfectly. I do not want to advocate for less teachers. Every teacher is important, we do not want to increase class size. We really value the relationships between our teachers and our students, and we know that that is important. The bigger the class size, the harder those kinds of things are. In reviewing the numbers most recently, and we're meeting with Principal Dunn tomorrow, I am very confident that we can still run this course. I want to offer the one clarification. The groundskeeper, although I'm sure our spring sports will benefit, I really don't want it to be seen as a, someone to fix the fields. That's, it's an unfair assumption. Spring is very busy, right? We have pests and insects and poison ivy that needs to remove because now everybody's playing in the field, you know, there's just, it's a very busy time. I don't feel it would be responsible of me to advocate for one sport to have a, a groundskeeper. We do not have that luxury. You know, my kids play baseball too. I love baseball. I think we can do lots of good for our student athletes. I want to be clear that we would be hiring a groundskeeper that would add to our ability to support our facility and our grounds. As our buildings age, our maintenance and grounds folks are being pulled away for more and more maintenance and repair, and less and less time is available for the exterior of our buildings. You know, cutting grass is important, and it can be a safety issue, but when we have false alarms with our fire drills, or we have burst pipes, or we have other things that necessitate their time and energy, there's a ripple effect there. So, I just, I just wanted, I think it's important that I voice that. We do a lot with the resources and the human resources that we have. I just, as I hear this conversation, I really don't want it to sound like a groundskeeper or a teacher. You know, I, I really just want to reframe that a little bit. Both are extremely important. I do, you asked, and I do believe we can run the course without the additional FTE if necessary.
So I have a question, with what's gone on this past weekend with the pipes and the, all of that, does any of that impact our budget? And do we have to consider that before we start looking at these other options? Because if that's going to bring the number up-
Correct.
-then we're looking at more than 12.
Correct. So, we do not have an immediate impact to our operating budget. These are capital improvements that are necessary. They would be one-time costs over a thousand dollars, well over a thousand. And so, as Monica said at the start of the meeting in her remarks, we are collaborating with the town to look at a facility's need, a small capital and large capital need. So there will be a fiscal responsibility to upgrade our facilities. One really easy example is the boilers at the middle school. We've been talking about the boilers at the middle school for some time because we know that they're beyond their life expectancy. We've been able to repair them. Dale Kittleson is an HVAC guy, that's probably not the right term, but he's really good at it, and he's always repairing and working with our service providers to, to help us, you know, move forward. Unfortunately, this weekend, we came to a standstill with that, where we had to actually take parts off of the one that failed completely to repair the second. There was a moment where we had two boilers out, but on Saturday afternoon, they were able to repair that second boiler. That is an emergent situation, and it needs to be repaired, remedied. That will not impact what you're voting on this evening because it's a completely separate sort of pocket of money that we are working with the town through the bonding project, and it all, it all connects to our overall facility needs, which we're working to clearly define. And then, you do know that I've already set aside some funds in the small capital of Approximately, a little less than half, about 40%, is 400 or so dollars, is being identified for security and safety upgrades. I'm, I'm working with our vendors on that, and I am very optimistic that we're going to be able to do some significant upgrades right away in the first year. But the boilers take precedent. The boilers are our priority, they're an immediate need. So, we're working with, with Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen and our new town manager, Mike Walsh, has been very engaged, and I'm confident that we'll be able to get to where we need. So the short answer is no, it won't impact the budget that you're voting on this evening. And yes, overall, we do need to really look carefully at our financial obligations for the upkeep of our aging facilities.
Does anyone have any additional questions?
Yeah, I, I do. It's, it's really more of a, a comment, I guess, but, you know, when I went to the, I, I don't even remember what it was called, the middle school PAC meeting, we had a very persuasive young speaker to talk about the Mandarin program and wanting to keep that. And now, I'm sort of thinking, now that we're talking about certain classes having more kids and certain having less, if we're looking at potentially reducing that program, do we have enough manpower in the other foreign languages to absorb those students? And, you know, have, have other options been considered that would allow us to keep the Mandarin? Because I'm, I'm personally a little uncomfortable, I guess, with the idea of losing both elementary Spanish and middle school Mandarin at the same time. That just feels like a lot of reduction in one area. And obviously, we're looking, this is a really tight budget, I don't want to reduce any of the things we're looking at reducing, but that's, that's one area that I have, you know, been thinking about a little bit.
Too much, Jen, to answer the question.
Sure. Yeah. So, there are a lot of pieces, so if I forget one, please remind me. Since I've been in district, this is year four, we've really let the student interest drive the courses that we offer. And as a result of the middle school, the Mandarin sections have naturally gone down. In the, as opposed to saying, this teacher is teaching three sixth-grade Mandarin classes, let's find kids to put in the sections, we're saying, how many students really want to study Mandarin? And that number has gone down, but there is still about 20 students a year that are looking at, at that. So, yes, if we reduce Mandarin, those students are still needing to take a language, so Spanish and French sections would go up. But when we're reducing Spanish in other places across the district, we would be able to assume some of that there. And that's still part of the puzzle that we will need to work out once the budget is approved. One of the things I would mention, and I don't know if this was discussed last week, I apologize, is that as we start to align the middle school and the high school schedules more, there would also be the potential for students who were really interested at the middle school level to walk across the parking lot, to go to the high school, to start that language earlier.
And so, we, we, our proposal is a phase out, just one at a time. So, next year, we would not offer Mandarin to sixth grade, but the current sixth and seventh, as seventh and eighth graders, you know, in that way. And then, one of the world language instructors already teaches across the middle school and the elementary, and so she would assume more responsibility at the middle school. It's the same with the other world language instructor. Her schedule is, is not complete with Spanish. More than half of her time is spent teaching other things. So, the short answer is there is opportunity to maintain staff and get them squared away in, in one full experience as a, as a language teacher. As I, as we shared with you, the Mandarin teacher at the middle school teaches a variety of things in order to be a 1.0. I'm very committed to not reducing our teaching force with any, any layoffs. This would, this would all be natural attrition, retirement, absorbing others, like tightening things up to be a bit more efficient. The real missing piece of the puzzle is that we have very different schedules at the middle and the high school. So as you know, we're engaging with a scheduling consultant this spring to start working with our administration and our teachers, and everyone will be invited to engage when the time is right, to start really looking at that alignment of our schedules to maximize opportunities for students. Given our size, the more closely aligned we can be, we can maximize more opportunities for our students.
And I very much appreciate the emphasis on keeping the people that we have too. I think that's really responsible.
Are there any additional questions? I think, Sherry, the one thing I want to clarify here is if, is if we are going to be moving forward, I mean, I, I assume you have a, do you have a preference in, in an approach that we take? Or are you looking for the board to just decide?
My preference is to keep all of it and then some.
Well, I think it's all of our-
That's an easy, that's an easy question!
Without, without question, that's, that's all of our preferences. This has been extremely difficult on a variety of levels, and grows by respect.
I do have a question. So, when we talk about the lunch monitor, is there a way, is, is there a way to reduce by half? Like, is there any way we could chip away at that and, and take some of that so as to not, to add the, maybe add the .1 FTE instead of a .2, and then reduce the lunch monitor situation by, by a percentage?
So, with Mrs. Tanis in the room, I cannot say yes. You know, this is my first time going through this process. I just want to be really, just state the obvious, as a superintendent. And these are very hard decisions, and it goes against everything I believe in as an educator to even suggest these types of reductions. So, I, I feel like I need to vocalize that because we're getting to the finish line with our work. I also believe it to be true, but please, those veteran board members and Anna, please correct me if I'm misrepresenting the process. The board has a responsibility to get our budget to the appropriate level that we can bring forward to the Board of Finance on Monday, and that the taxpayers will support and pass. If we're talking about $4,000 or $6,000, I will, behind the scenes, my responsibility is to manage the resources and the people and the programming to make sure that that final appropriation gets what our students need. Do you know what I mean? I don't mean to imply that there's going to be any funny business going on, everything has been very transparent. And having said that, there are times when we post for a lunch monitor or TA and, and we can't find them. Or we suddenly have a retirement that I wasn't expecting, and I'm able to realize a few thousand dollars. So, I feel like it's important for me to say to you that I'm committed to all of this, you know, and we will work really hard to make sure that we can do that. The responsibility of the board is to make those final decisions around the overall appropriation. appropriation. I'm very hopeful that I'm going to find that point two for my point eight PE and wellness teacher, you know, somewhere. But I can't say that with certainty right now, just the way the process goes, right? But I'm hopeful that I will be able to do that. The process doesn't end here with that final number. In a lot of ways, I think it's game on for us, right? As we start to look at what our true needs are and those positions. So frankly, you know, you could take it all out of supplies, and I'll find a way to make that work. You could give me that one FTE, you know, point one FTE for PE, and I can make that work. You could tell me that, you know, instead of 20 hours a week, I have 15 hours a week for my seasonal person. I mean, you truly can break this down and slice it the way that you feel best as the board, and I will get to work making it happen.
So can you go back to that again? What did you just say about?
Uh-oh. How long are you guys going to be here?
You mentioned something about, so a seasonal groundskeeper is, you said 16 weeks?
16 weeks.
I calculated, and Anna, perhaps you can help with the math, but I calculated 16 weeks, just looking at the calendar, our busy season, March to June. And I calculated approximately 20 hours a week at the hourly rate of just a
Part-time.
Part-time.
Groundskeeper.
Groundskeeper. That, my math, was just under $8,000. I rounded it off. But I would assume that we could play with those numbers if necessary.
Right. And so each of the things that we budget are based on, is based on the best information that we have on hand. And as you can see, when we look at the forecast every single month, that these areas shift. So what you decide on tonight, like the superintendent said, she will put in the budget and do her best to implement. But we all know that things are going to shift. The lunch monitor at 8,963 is a .36 position, .36, which is very difficult to fill. We have, I think, one vacancy. This year, all year, we did not fill that position, just to give you an example of the way the budget works. And if you just look in the financial, in the forecast, you'll see the puts and takes. This one a little over, this one a little under. So if you give the superintendent the general guidance that you would like to give her, you know, sure she's going to implement that, and then take a deep breath, like she's saying, and know that the budget is going to happen. But the goal is to keep it at a 5.43% increase, you know, more, you know, less, and then we work through that as our actual life happens in FY '25.
I have a question about the lunch monitor. What do they, I mean, I get the title, but, so it's not a cafeteria worker? They're not doing food service?
Correct.
They're just watching the students while they eat lunch?
Teacher's contractual lunch is at the same time as the students' lunch at the middle school. And so we need coverage to keep children safe in the cafeteria. They also go outside for a recess break, fresh air break.
So it's just one lunchway?
No, no. How many, three?
There's three lunchtimes.
So you can't cover caf duty with faculty?
We do.
And then we have to pay them hourly to do so.
It's more expensive that way.
So if we were to add the lunch monitor, has the budget already been offset, the additional amount we'd be paying the teachers?
No. This is a specific position.
Do we have any idea how much money that is?
How much we pay teachers?
Teachers to manage.
I mean, it very ebbs and flows, and it's a contractual obligation. It's, you know, because they're giving up their
Right, right. Their lunch.
Duty-free opportunity, so they're compensated. And we've done that quite a bit this year, because we've been so short-staffed with both TAs and monitors and paraprofessionals, and then as well as substitute teachers have been hard to come by. That's not ideal for the wellness of our teachers.
No.
I much prefer that they enjoy their lunch and socialize, I mean, you know, they use the bathroom, and they make coffees, and they call parents, I mean, that's what they do. But I would much appreciate them to have some autonomy of their schedule. Having someone to monitor the lunch, at least in our current schedule, is a need.
So arguably, the lunch monitor at $8,963 saves us money as well as the well-being of our teachers. Is that accurate?
I think so.
I had another question that, I apologize if it was gone over at the budget meeting I wasn't at, but one of the questions I had had was about the addition of the college and career assistant, that I think that was going up by an additional four or something like that. Is that still in the budget?
It is. We did discuss that last time. She, he or she, the teaching assistant, currently, the classroom, that space, is not able to be open all day long. I do feel it's important to have it fully staffed throughout the day so that we can program for students, serve students who are, you know, transitioning back into the school setting from perhaps a hospitalization, extended illness, maybe school avoidance or anxiety. And we have some goals to bolster that program, to better support the growing needs of our students. But it is currently included, and it would be something that you could discuss certainly.
And that is in Q and D.
Oh, and that's quality Q and D.
So that's not in this.
Correct. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I hear deep sighs.
I have a clarifying question about the lunch monitor. So does that mean that this year, we were unable to find a person, and therefore, that money was budgeted this year, but we may do without a lunch monitor this year, and therefore, this is a proposed cut because we did all right without a lunch monitor?
Yes and no. The, it required us having teachers pick up those duties, but, yeah, I think that that's accurate. Mrs. Tanis is in the audience. I mean, we were without one, we've had only the two, and we've been okay, but it's not ideal because we, yeah.
One who recently started, we didn't have one for a long time.
That's right.
We don't like our options.
I mean, this is, we keep repeating how incredibly difficult this is. I'm going to ask one more clarifying question. If we reduce the point two FTE for PE, we are hopeful that we will be able to pick that up elsewhere somehow? Is that correct? We don't know. We don't know.
I mean, these are hard decisions, and I really, it's not my place to, I don't want to overstep. I mean, whatever reduction you choose to make, we will do the best that we can with those reductions. And, you know, we've already reduced almost a half a million dollars from the budget. So this is sort of what's left, you know? Right. So these decisions have been excruciatingly difficult all the way through. And, you know, sometimes it's a little bit of a leap of faith to know that it'll all come together.
Even though this is my fourth year, I'm still a little fuzzy on the process. When the Board of Finance says you have to commit at 5.43, what happens if we commit at 5.47? Like, are we now allowed to do that? Are we obligated to commit?
We can. They can take our budget and cut it, or we go to the town, and then the town votes us down, and then we're, not only are we that point zero three, or point zero four, whatever, above the Board of Finance guidance that we have to deal with, but we may have to take more.
So the politics of it is that if we stick with their guidance, we're going to enjoy the support and hopefully get it through a referendum?
Correct. That's what I understand in theory.
So I'm really struggling. I'm really struggling because I feel like we have, the choice that we're making is, on the one hand, programmatic, because we're taking a point two FTE, where we only have 32 students that are interested in taking the class. And I guess, as we sit here today, we don't know if those 32 students will ultimately enroll in that class. Versus groundskeeper, which would be, it'd be great if we can put the groundskeeper, a seasonal groundskeeper, in the budget, but that's not even, I mean, that may not, that's not necessarily earmarked for the baseball field. So the purpose of debating about a groundskeeper and the value of a groundskeeper won't ultimately effectuate the goal of improving the baseball field.
Well, I mean, but to that point, when we talk to the grounds crew, they're like, there just aren't enough hours in the day. They'll mow it once, but if it rains three days and it needs a second time, it's not going to happen, because they're at the other schools, they're dealing with maintenance, they're dealing, right? They're just, they're overwhelmed. Our current existing man-hours aren't enough to keep up with the fields.
The concern I have, though, Dave, is that there may be, in order of priorities, there may be other things that that, you know, seasonal groundskeeper gets deployed to do, and still the baseball field doesn't get mowed.
Right.
So then we're like, you know, you know what I'm saying? So then it's like, we've had this debate to try to solve a problem that we actually didn't solve, but we spent $8,000.
I would say that the FTE thing, I mean, in my experience as an educator, these kinds of things are, so, you know, those 32 students are coming from somewhere. Like, can they use this in lieu of another PE class?
Step class.
I mean, so we're all getting our assignments today, you know, or this week in West Hartford, right? And, you know, my wife found out she has two sections of 27. You know, last year, it was three of 20, right? And they took the same number and divided it. You know, those are the kinds of things that we have to do in order to make the budget. If there's a place to have a bigger class, I think PE is probably it.
Except it's a step class. I mean, but you've got example highlights that then we're adding the burden on the teacher in that scenario, right? And so...
I mean, I didn't know where you were. We're all, I'm hesitating in a variety of ways. To me, after, I walked the grounds this weekend, and they're vast, and I get it. But at this point in time, to me, the seasonal groundskeeper seems like a luxury that we don't, that we can't afford. I think we're going to have to really push our boosters and try to find a way to meet the needs of our fields and help our maintenance staff as much as possible. But we're eliminating a lot of programs and impacting a variety of students and teachers. So if we were to, and hear me out, if we were to only add the point one FTE?
Then we're done.
Then we're done.
And not do the groundskeeper?
And not do the groundskeeper for now, knowing that this is something that needs tending to. I mean, do we know for certain if it was eliminated from the Board of Selectmen's budget? Do we know?
I do not.
Their public works person?
So if they, is there an opportunity to share if they have one?
We don't know. I think that, we thought that they had eliminated.
I thought they had eliminated. I thought they said they had eliminated that position. And when we share, we do get charged. So when we share, they charge the district back, just like we do with technology.
Yeah, it's just waxing philosophical here, but as you listen to the financial report month after month, and we're up 75, we're down 150, this week, we're 150 better than we were last month or something, you know, we can't come up with $8,000 to mow the fields. I mean, it's just, it feels like there's certain things that we're going to hold everybody really tight and accountable for, and then there's this other pile of money, and it just, I mean, it's kind of frustrating. How can we have that much flexibility to deal with that much, what I would call chaos, right? I mean, it struck me as kind of absurd when I first came on the board, that these numbers could go up 100,000 from one month to the next. And then over here, we're arguing over, not arguing, but discussing, you know, an $8,000 lunch monitor versus, just...
But that's the difference with the federal obligation, that, you know, I sit in PPTs all day, and sometimes it's, this kid needs special transportation, and this one needs a special program, and somebody needs a para, and that, you know, those literally change daily, and we have to recommend what is best for that individual child. And to me, that's like a higher ethical responsibility than most of the other things that we're contemplating.
If the town has the capacity to deal with that kind of ambiguity, but these numbers have to be fixed.
Well, they don't necessarily, but we're, the numbers are what they are. So it's like, whether you can handle the chaos or not, this is what you got. Whereas, and so we have to look for other creative ways to make the rest of the operational budget work. You know, we've cut a lot, and I feel that, I mean, you know, to your point earlier about, you know, we're reducing Mandarin, we're taking out, you know, basically world language of the elementary levels, I think that's a responsible decision, I do. I think it was done with great thought, but then, again, you know, I'd be okay with only adding the point one FTE. I guess that's where I sit today.
I would as well.
I feel like that has the least impact on academics.
And I wish, I wish we could, you know, do a better job to assist with the grounds. I really do. I really wish there was a way to...
Is there any potential for, and I don't know where liability would stand in this, but to look for volunteers from the community to help with some of that? Because I feel like a lot of folks would be willing to do that. We have a huge turnout for the Little League opening day, whatever the workday is when parents come in and help.
So we explored that a little bit, you know, so we don't want to take away work from union employees, so there would have to be an agreement. So as an example, if I might, David, you had suggested that you'd be willing to do some leaf blowing and paint the shed. So first of all, I want to say that went a long way for a collaborative, problem-solving approach, you know? Because we have very prideful employees who work their tail off to do the very best that they can. And so they're disheartened when students, or parents, or coaches are not as satisfied as they would like for them to be with the condition of our fields. But when there's suggestion to volunteer or assist, it feels like we're all being a part of the solution. And so we discussed the painting of the sheds, and they were like, we'll buy the equipment. Is the union okay with volunteers coming? And they said, yeah, you know what, we would be, because that's just something we're not going to get to. And so I think that if, what I'm trying to say is if there was a collaborative effort to do like a cleanup day on a Saturday, and teams come out, NHS volunteers their time, you know, captains organize for fields to be like a spring cleanup, I can't speak for everyone, that would, I'd have to speak with my union leadership and my administrators, but I do think that in the spirit of collaboration and getting our fields open, that there would be, there would be a benefit for that. We're at the mercy of the weather, we're at the mercy of the elements, and there's been years where we have snow on the ground still at this time of year. been years where we have snow on the ground still at this time of year. So, you know, there's just so many factors that go into what we're able to fully do for our fields. It's a, it's a vast campus. It's beautiful. And I think it's something to be proud of, and I think that we want to continue to put resources where we can. You know, you heard me say a few weeks ago that I, I did not responsibly move forward the halftime groundskeeper, although I really did want to, because I had just checklist, you can see how challenging this is. Every decision that we made to this point, it was like, okay, is this student facing? Does this impact the instructions? Does it, you know? And so unfortunately, these are the kinds of things that often come down to this moment where it's like, well, what are we really going to do? So I think that we've raised awareness around the needs related to the fields. I think that there's a collaborative spirit. I think that we already got some really great improvements underway. So, you know, I can only speak to what maybe we could do. And we're speaking about, really, I do it from now too. I just want to remind people, like, we're talking about the FY '25 budget. So we're talking about next spring, having a seasonal groundskeeper. Next spring, doing these kinds of things. So, you know, the more forward-thinking you are, and the more planful you are, the more productive we can be, so.
Is there any further discussion? Is there anyone that wants to make a motion?
Which one might be a little complicated.
Linda's ready.
I think we would, at this time, we'd be looking for a motion that the Granby Board of Education adopt the FY '25 Board of Education budget with the additional modification of adding a point one FTE for PE. Is that correct?
It's the superintendent's proposed budget.
Superintendent's proposed budget.
With the reduction of one point one FTE. Because you're looking to save that additional $6,750.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, I just noticed it says for PE as opposed to STEM.
It does. I'm very sorry. That's really a mistake.
It should be STEM.
It is, the credit is a STEM credit. You are correct.
We're looking at a PE teacher.
We have a teacher that's less than 1.0, and that individual is certified to teach this particular course.
Yeah.
And that's common too. I know we have our classes that count as STEM where I work.
So I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Is there anyone willing to make the motion? I don't think I can make the motion.
I, I will make the motion that the Granby Board of Education adopt the FY '25 Board of Education budget.
Superintendent.
Oh, excuse me.
It's not that.
Superintendent budget with the modification of reducing the point one FTE for PE.
I will second.
Would we like to have any further discussion?
Well, one, so just for now, the considerations or the suggestions that were made last time, which I'm not finding. Oh. Where we found the 82063, is that included in, in the superintendent's budget that's already?
Do we need that to be included in the motion, Linda?
That amendment?
Do we need to, I believe we do, because what's in the book is the 863.
So it would be the superintendent's amended?
Amended, yes.
So the motion would be to approve the superintendent's amended FY, FY '25 budget.
I move that the Granby Board of Education adopt the superintendent's FY '25 budget with the...
As amended.
As amended.
Reducing with the point one reduction.
Point one reduction in the 82,063 dollar proposed reductions. No?
No, we've amended.
Okay.
That was amended.
No.
Rose, right?
So I'll move that the Granby Board of Education adopt the FY '25 superintendent's budget as amended and further reducing a point one FTE for PE slash STEM at a rate of 6,750. Yeah, does that work?
Yes.
I will second.
Do we have any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. That was well timed. Somebody's text just went up, and it was, that was well timed. Okay, I can see from Chase and Katie's face, they're like, hurry up and make some decisions already. So we're going to try to get through the rest of this. It is very late. Thank you all for sticking this out. It is very much appreciated. These are big decisions that we do not take lightly. So thank you all for your thoughtful considerations and discussion. Board standing committee reports, Curriculum Policy, Technology, Communication did not meet tonight. Tonight it was Finance. There's the approved meeting, or minutes attached. Finance Personnel Facilities did meet tonight. Donna?
Yes, we reviewed the statement of accounts, and we approved them. We also discussed a, we reviewed and approved a request for a sabbatical leave of absence. We reviewed the school bus rotation schedule, and we reviewed a, and approved a request to purchase a plow truck from small cap funds that were available for that purpose. And that was it. But I do also want to note that it is positive that while we are still, we still have an unfavorable full budget forecast, it is improving. So that was very positive.
Excellent. Did anybody have any questions for Donna? Okay. Other board-related reports, Crack Cave, any announcements there? Granby Education Foundation, we are still looking for a board member to represent at the GEF meetings.
Come join us, we're fun.
When are the meetings?
They are the third Monday of each month at 7:00 over in Central Services.
Thank you. The calendar for events is on the back. I'm not going to read through it all, simply because I'm time. Board member announcements. Do we have any action items, Madam Secretary?
I don't catch anything, so.
Okay, excellent. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. So first, I'd just like to express my gratitude for your collaboration, as well as the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, and the new town manager, Mike Walsh. We have been talking, collaborating, and really working hard to support our school district, so I appreciate that collaboration. I won't repeat things that have already been celebrated, but wow, Footloose was fantastic, and I'm really grateful to GEF for their very generous grant. You could hear the quality improved in those mics. That was fantastic. I also want to give a shout out to our PTO. As you know, I've spoken a few meetings about sort of our, being re-energized post-COVID with, with PTO. We had an excellent author visit, John Patrick Green, to both Kelly Lane and Wells. And we do have a virtual meeting this coming Monday, the 25th, at 6:30. I will be speaking and answering questions about the budget, and that meeting is 6:30, and the link is available on that, on our website. All things budget will be in the next edition of The Vision and the Granby Drummer that will be coming to homes next week. I also just want to continue to remind community members and the board that we do have our series of community conversations. The first one is being held next Tuesday, March 26th, at 6:00. The topic is restorative practices, and this may not be a term that everyone's familiar with, but it's really about problem solving and supporting your children at home and at school with, you know, mean spirited behavior and when kids are feeling a little off. So I think it'll be a really great session. I am also holding another superintendent's community conversation on April 4th. This one is in the evening, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM via Zoom, and Linda Powell will be happy to share out that link for anyone that's interested in attending. And the next opportunity to discuss the budget is this coming Monday. The Board of Finance meeting is at 7:30, and the public hearing is on April 1st. And then we really want to encourage everyone to get out and vote on April 15th. Our next board meeting is on April 3rd. So the spring is coming.
So just to clarify, we have a budget workshop scheduled for next week that will now be canceled.
Correct.
All right.
Do we go to the meeting on Monday?
On, on the Board of Finance meeting? It'd be wonderful if, if anyone's available to attend. That'd be great to show the support for the budget.
But it's not like a tri-board meeting or...
No, no, it's not.
So the meeting on the 27th is canceled?
Next Wednesday, yes.
Do you present the budget to the Board of Finance on Monday?
I do. Also, just, just to touch upon the restorative practices that you mentioned, if anybody in the board has any questions about that, our board member, Liz Barlow, has a lot of thoughts and excellent insights into that. I had an opportunity to speak with her about it a few weeks ago, so she's a good person to talk to about it. She's a good person in general, yes, yes. She was particularly insightful. This is her subject area, so it was, it was very informative. Does anyone have a motion?
Yes, I move that we adjourn the morning of the meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.